Planning Commission, so does it go to Planning Commission?
Good evening. Welcome to the PCOS and Planning Commission work session for Monday, February, or Monday, the 16th of September. We will open the work session, but we do not have a quorum physically present. I would ask staff to present on the CCIP first, then we will take up the short-term rental discussion, then the zoning ordinance. Thomas, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're just gonna flip this work session agenda around per your instruction. And first will be the work session presentation on our CCIP. Tara Woodruff, our finance director, is here. Sean Crawford, our engineer. John Anderson, our director of public works. And the assistant city manager, Tank O'Connell. So we'll receive that first and move on to the agenda items thereafter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present the CCIP for FY '26 to beyond FY 2030. I know you have the document. It is also available on the city's website for review. We received 56 project requests totaling nearly $33 million from all departments. And as you can see, when we talk about departments, we're talking about all of our city departments as well as the schools. The departmental requests include 4.6 million in state funding, which is primarily for street paving and some related equipment. And the remaining 28.4 million would require city funding for general fund support, debt issuance, and utility fund support. We certainly cannot afford to do all of the projects. Therefore, you're gonna see that some are beyond the five-year plan. The recommended CCIP for the five years between FY '26 and FY 30 does total about 18.8 million, which includes almost 8 million for school projects, 4 million in state-funded projects, 1 million and a half in utility fund projects, and 5.3 million in other city department projects. You may recall from last year that we recommended a debt financing plan with the CCIP. So fiscal year '25 is the first year of that plan, and debt issuance was approved by city council in the FY '25 budget process. Therefore, we plan to issue $3 million later this fiscal year for the replacement of one school bus and the PCOS and High School HVAC system. And our recommendation is to continue with the financing plan that was laid out last year to issue debt over the five years to complete some of the larger projects. If you recall, we have existing debt that will be paid off in FY '29, so we're advancing some of that decrease in debt service payments. All right, so now we're gonna walk through each year of the city manager's recommendation as it relates to the support needed for general fund and debt financing. I have state funding on each of the slides, but I'm gonna speak to the general fund and debt financing particularly. For FY '26, the recommendation is to request 510,000 in general fund support for two police vehicle replacements. You'll see that we hope to replace one to two police vehicles in each year of this plan. There's also a financial system replacement and a facility condition assessment for City Hall and Fire Station 1 to analyze various elements of the building, such as the mechanical, electrical systems, as well as HVAC, roof, windows, and doors. Based on the current condition of Fire Station 2, the city does plan to address that building in the current fiscal year. For debt financing in FY '26, the recommendation is for a total of 2 point million to replace the roof at the PCOS and High School, replace two fire chief vehicles, and replace a dump truck for public works. And in FY '27, we will aspire to recommend almost 522,000 in general fund support for a phone system replacement, which includes the schools and the city phone system, two police vehicles, and watershed studies, which we previously completed a study for Oxford Muse, and with ARPA money, we were able to improve the drainage in this area, but we have more watershed studies to complete. So you'll see this over the next few years. The design costs for Shipwreck Island improvements and a playground in Phase 2 of Two Tree Park. The first phase of Two Tree Park is almost complete with signage, parking lot, bike rack, and a walking trail already in place, and a picnic shelter will be constructed this fall. For debt financing, a Fire Engine 1 replacement is planned. We are still experiencing long lead times for these items. The fire truck that we ordered last July of 2023, we're hoping that it's gonna come in in the spring. So you can see, it takes about two years to get those. One project that we really wanted to note was the Shipwreck Island Improvement Project, which is a revenue-sharing project with VDOT. And in June of 2021, city council approved submission of the application, and then we increased in August the application amount to $700,000. Because the revenue-sharing program is a one-to-one match, VDOT did approve the application and allocated $350,000 in funds based on the application amount. But since the time of the application, the project cost estimate has increased to $975,000, which means that the city will need to provide an additional 275, more than we had projected previously. So the costs for this project are recommended for the preliminary design to begin in FY '27 and construction in FY '28, using both general fund and debt issuance to support the city's share of the project. FY '28 is a big year for projects recommended, particularly for the schools. We are hoping to have an increase in general fund support to almost $642,000 in this year for two police vehicles, the additional watershed studies, a portion of the construction costs of the Shipwreck Island project we just talked about, Blue Way Trails. It's parks hope to have, to create a waterway system where people can canoe and have wildlife observation opportunities in the city. And then they would like to plan for a multi-use, a multipurpose play surface at Two Tree Park, which would have basketball and other games like hopscotch, four-square. This year is the largest debt financing planned in the five years, which is primarily for the PCOS and Elementary School HVAC replacement, as well as two school buses, the traffic signal support system, and Shipwreck Island. In FY '29, we aspire to have 525,000 in general fund support for two police vehicles, continue the watershed studies, and replace the street sweeper, which is an important piece of equipment that we use to clear streets and parking lots of debris before and after community events. Debt financing in this year includes two school bus replacements, the PCOS and Elementary School gym floor resurfacing, Medic 21 replacement, and traffic signal support system. FY '30, we will aspire to have 588,000 in general fund support, continue of the two police vehicles, watershed studies, and replace the City Hall shingle roof and siding. The flat roof structure was replaced in fiscal year '24, but the shingles still need replacement, and the siding is worn as well. So the hope is that we would be able to match the siding to this building and the public safety building that's being constructed now to tie those two buildings together. And at this point, debt financing will be considered for one school bus replacement and traffic signal support system. In the utilities fund, this is supported by our sewer fund. So for our projected revenues and fund balance, we hope to be able to do pump station upgrades for Pump Station 1 and replacement pumps for other stations throughout the city. The Pump Station 4 main upgrades are planned for Pump Stations 12, 13, 14, and 15. And there's also a recommendation to replace the vacuum trailer and truck. And the utility department has been working to install backup generators at all the pump stations. So this recommendation is to complete that project for Pump Station 5 and then replace generators at Pump Stations 4, 6, and 15A. I went through that pretty quickly, so certainly if you have any questions. The October Planning Commission meeting, we would need to hold a public hearing, and then you would consider, if approved at that meeting, then we would take it to city council from there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. A few department heads are here as well, if you have questions.
I have a question. There's at least one project in here that's listed with a cost of TBE. How is that factored into the recommended budget for two years?
It's a to-be-determined. We don't have a cost estimate, so it's not included in the years.
So this is, this is for the TMDL improvements, which seems fairly open-ended. It looks like there might be a lot that's involved in that potentially. So is there no planning going into that financially at all at this point, or?
At this point, yeah. And I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
Good evening. Sean Crawford, our engineer. So.
Hello.
The TMDL action plan is currently on hold because we have credits that go towards meeting our yearly goals. So once those credits kind of wear out over time, it's really just a placeholder at this time, because we're currently covered by existing credits that we already have.
So there's no impending work that's anticipated there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have anything. It's good presentation. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Jaeger, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
We are now gonna proceed to our short-term rental presentation. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a new member here tonight, Mr. George Jaeger. He has been a member for some months, but we haven't had a meeting. So this is his first one. Had the pleasure of meeting with him soon after his appointment to talk through some of the work the Planning Commission has done and will be doing, so look forward. I can say, while I myself and all our staff, working with him, moving forward. What is in front of you tonight in your work session packet, and then the associated language is in the regular session packet? But you'll see my memo there and some state code language and what I consider as a living document, the conditional use permit request. That's the application for short-term rentals specifically. We've had this conversation with the Planning Commission over the course of the last few years. It's an ongoing conversation throughout the Commonwealth, and quite frankly, every locality is struggling with how to regulate short-term rentals. But, you know, the guidance has, has pretty much been for the last three years, well, wait on the General Assembly, they're gonna give you some state code that says exactly how localities will regulate these things, and then you'll just have to do it. Well, two or three General Assembly sessions later, and virtually no guidance, here we are. They did beef up a little bit of their language, which speaks to locality's ability to establish registries, which I think, which I can say confidently, gives us enough so that we can move forward and work our process. And in short, nothing being recommended to you by staff is in conflict with the state code. We've had extensive conversations with the city attorney's office about it, with the city manager. And, you know, if something in our process at some point becomes in conflict with the state code, like everything else, we'll change process and we'll conform. I want to go back a couple of years. We, this, this really started, and a few years ago, I'm not sure if any of the three of you were on, we did permit a conditional use permit for a tourist home on West Creek Road. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and subsequently approved by city council. That is the only permitted short-term rental we have in the city. We all know that is not the only operating short-term rental we have in the city. By short-term rental, I mean basically a room or space available for rent for 30 days or less, commonly referred to Airbnb or Verbo. So we have, we have really waited on establishing a process, one before the General Assembly got some, some language, and two, we don't steal things from other localities in zoning, but we borrow good ideas. And we have borrowed a few good ideas. The application, I edited it and tailored to our needs and our liking. I think it was, I found it from Front Royal, and some of the language that you'll see in what will be the new Appendix E short-term rentals, that is pretty much just the state code and our additions transcribed. So now, in the present, the last conversation we had with the Planning Commission was, you know, go to city council, see, have a work session, gather their thoughts, see what direction they want to take this thing, and, you know, come back to us with language, and then we'll kick it back up to them. So that's what we did. We had a work session with city council, and we asked for direction, basically, and how to move forward with the regulation of short-term rentals. Where we landed was that all those short-term rentals that were whole home and not owner-occupied would continue to require conditional use permits. That's our process now. That will continue to be our process for those uses. That's been our process for uses not specifically permitted in any zoning district for decades, pretty much since we've been a city. So that will continue in that situation where you want to rent your entire home or boat or a space to someone for 30 days or less, you will have to apply for a conditional use permit using the application that's part of your packet. That application, like I said, it's a, it's a living document. You know, as we get through this process, we're gonna learn things from one application to the next. All the conditions there won't necessarily pertain to all applications. So we will, you know, it's, it's a living document. It'll change. It'll change depending on the application, the use, the where, the when, the how. So, you know, if there are things in there that you think should be changed or clarified, we can do that. We can do that at any time. But what we want to do is adopt a concrete city code on how we're going to register and regulate short-term rentals moving forward. So we talked about the whole-home rental. That'll continue to be by conditional use permit. The direction we got from city council was that when it's a partial home or owner-occupied, that we permit that administratively. That's the situation where you have a mother-in-law suite that you want to offer for short-term rental, or even just a room. Folks do it all the time. They offer rooms in their home for periods of 30 days or less on short-term rental websites. We will permit that administratively. We are not going to permit folks, even though it's something on their property, to offer those for short-term rentals. That being the camper in your backyard that you run power to and hooked up to your home sewer. That, that can't happen. There's other places in the code that don't allow for that. You can't live in a trailer or camper in a resident, a single-family residential district. So that's not the point. That's not what we're looking at. It is that finished room over the garage or the bedroom. I think everyone understands. So that we will take on administratively, you know, with the conditions, basically, same conditions in the application. But what the state code has given us, and I'll direct your attention there, it's that second page in these work session documents after my memo, that, that's the current state code, creation of registry for short-term rental of property. It gives us two very important definitions. Operator, and I'll just read it for the folks at home. As defined by the state code, operator means the proprietor of any dwelling, lodging, or sleeping accommodations offered as a short-term rental, whether in the capacity of owner, lessee, sublesssee, mortgagee in possession, licensee, or any other possessory capacity. Pretty broad definition, but, you know, not so vague. We can't figure out what it means. Short-term rental means a provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for charge for the occupancy. Charge for the occupancy is important. The commissioner of revenue presented to council, and the language has been adopted for us to collect the local taxes on short-term rentals, so that's already been done. And then you'll see, you know, B1 through the end of the page there, this is just a one-pager portion of state code, but it does give us some guidance there. I don't want to read through, through all of that and belabor you with it. I would go to, you know, the second one first. That basically says that if someone is a real, is licensed by the Real Estate Board or a property owner who is a real estate licensee and a few more qualifications, that they basically don't have to apply for local permitting, but they're obviously still subject to business, you know, obtaining a business permit, paying the taxes. This allows us, and C, a locality to adopt a registry ordinance. That is exactly what we're doing. It's a registry and regulatory ordinance, and it is just that. Folks will be required, if approved administratively or by CUP, to register, keep the use registered on an annual basis. That costs upfront would be the CUP application price. Right now, it's $1,711. And then we have the language in there that it's $200 to re-register every year, basically trying, you know, covering the cost of that administrative, that staff review, and that staff process. We cannot prohibit by ordinance someone who is owner-occupied from offering their home for rent only if it is to be approved by CUP. That's not what we're doing here. In that situation, we will approve it administratively, but this has been our process, like I said, for decades for uses not specifically permitted to require CUP. So even if the recommendation from planning or if council changed direction to all by CUP, that's been our practice. You know, it's not a new thing. No one from the state's gonna, you know, I'll say, you know, shake their finger at us. No, no, you can't do that. We've been doing that, you know? And we, we can show that. We had a CUP already for that action, approved by city council, and we did have an owner-occupied, of course, short-term rental come to Planning Commission, and then they withdrew the application before city council's consideration. So I think if we flip to the new language, you'll see it there in blue, this will, if recommended for approval and adopted by council, this will become Appendix E to our city code. It will be its own ordinance. You can see it not in blue and formatted and titled appropriately in the adoption resolution in your regular session packets. But I will walk through this. The second paragraph, it reads, "Any residential use that falls within the definition of short-term rental as defined in this ordinance and as amended in the state code shall be permitted only after the issuance of a conditional use permit for whole home or not owner-occupied rentals by the city council or only after the issuance of a home business permit for partial home and owner-occupied rentals by the zoning administrator in accordance with this ordinance using city-provided application forms." Get a business license either way. If it's something we can approve administratively, we'll use the home business permit application that with every other home business permit. A is important there. We wanted to give the folks operating enough time to come in compliance with the code. It's not our intention to, you know, for city council to adopt new language and then hit folks the next day with a notice of violation. We're not gonna do that. It's not how we operate. What they will get is a letter that says, this is the new city code, you have 90 days, basically, to apply for your CUP or for the home business permit, you know, and we're here to help. B is that permitted short-term rentals shall be subject to the requirements of the City of PCOS and Short-Term Rental Registry as administered by the zoning administrator. And there will be, you know, requirements listed therein, of course, and then, of course, those that are conditioned in the CUP, and, you know, as we work through those applications. So when we get to the meat of this thing, the short-term regulations, registration, I need to throw rental in there, short-term rental regulation, rental regulations, registration and operation thereof, most of this is taken straight from that state code, the page before. Some clarified, some has our deadlines. But A is that the operators of short-term rentals shall register the use on an annual basis and provide the information as required by the state code. The B, we say, the registration for the operation of a short-term rental shall be valid for a period of one year, January 1 to December 31. That's consistent with our process, per se, a farm animal permit. It gets you through the calendar year. Registration renewal shall be subject to the imposition of additional conditions as necessary as determined by the zoning administrator or by city council. So it's clear, and it'll be at CUPs that council approves, that they have the right to revoke or review or amend CUPs as they see fit. This gives us administratively, basically, the same authority for those that we approve administratively. If conditions be modified, then we'll do that. That section continues to say that a non-refundable fee of $200 shall accompany each application beginning July 1 of 2025. The permit fee will be adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index. That's consistent throughout the code for basically every other fee the city assesses. C says that, and this is from the state code, "Operators of short-term rentals whom fail to register the use as required shall be subject to a penalty of $500. Until an operator for which a penalty has been assessed receives approval and registers such property, he may not continue to offer such property for short-term rentals in accordance with the state code. Upon repeated violations of the registry ordinance, an operator may be prohibited from registering and offering the property for short-term rental." That's, you know, bad actors. Repeated violations of the conditions as approved by council or those, you know, through the administrative process, complaints from neighbors, you know, obviously, you know, if it's a noise situation and the police department gets involved, this gives us the authority to not allow people to re-register their short-term rental. And D, as provided in the state code, the zoning administrator shall have the authority to prohibit an operator required to register short-term rental to continue operation and will revoke the permit upon multiple violations on more than three occasions of applicable state and local laws, ordinances, and regulations as they relate to the short-term rental. Again, that's pulled straight from the state code where it says, three or more violations, locality has the right to revoke the registration and basically. And then E, it says, "Lesses or sublesses may act as operators, consistent with the state code. However, no individual may offer more than one property for short-term rental in the capacity of an operator as a lessie or sublessie." That is to avoid, you know, an individual or a corporation from leasing multiple houses within the city for the sole purpose of having, you know, multiple or dozens of short-term rentals. That's, you know, it's our intention and the intention of the state code right now to keep this very individual-based, either for you to conduct the business at your home or a person do it for you, manage it, not for someone, you know, to lease dozens of homes in the same locality and, you know... homes in the same locality and, you know, have a large short-term rental presence in the city, town, or county. This document, like I say, is the culmination of work with the planning commission previously, conversations with city council, certainly the city manager and city attorney's office. And it's our hope that at your next meeting, and just reading through it, I've got a few things I want to clarify, but at your next meeting, it's our goal to bring this to you for action in public hearing. So if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them now or at your next meeting or any time in between.
Good question. I'd like to hear in your words what you perceive the criteria to be for acceptance of a CUP for a short-term rental. I see a lot of very specific stuff on the application, like Wi-Fi, phone stuff, and landscaping, and I can understand the desirability of maintaining a registry, but I'm just curious about why all these details are on the application.
This application, I kind of played a dual purpose. One, it's application to the city, the details, the conditions that, you know, we will impose or council will impose, or that we'll recommend. And then this, the purpose. The other purpose is for this document to be made available to those renting the short-term rental, so that they see the conditions as approved, and what can and what is and is not allowed at the short-term rental. But, you know, it provides them, that's really there more for the renters' information than it is ours, if that makes sense.
Would there be a basis for rejection of a CUP for any reason?
Oh, that's a, you know, city council will make that call, and certainly you'll make a recommendation to them. I think, I don't speculate for council action, but, you know, you could envision when, or if a person who has been operating unpermitted refuses to enter the process and finally does, you know, if that's the bad actor, it's more people than allowed, or lots of noise complaint, you know, those type concerns, maybe that would be a reason to reject. Really, each application is unique. Each application's going to be different. The neighborhoods are different. So I don't think there's a, hey, if you do this, or you put this in your application, it's getting denied. And I think that's why council's direction was to leave this more so open-ended in the situation where people are renting their whole home so that they could consider all factors, you know, and this whole application. It's our goal to get as much information as we can so that we can provide you, council, with pretty much everything now.
That's kind of where I was going with it as far as location stuff, and is the intent is that we'd look at a specific location and then the application of the, the location of the particular application, and with the realization that some short-term rental might increase some traffic or something, I mean, what's the level that's envisioned that would go into these decisions, I guess?
Yeah. I mean, it's a good question, you know, and I wish I had a more direct answer for you, but it's just such, I mean, it's such a shot in the dark telling you that there's going to be a consistent threshold, you know, really for any of us, because we have private lanes, you know, we have neighborhoods, the roads in which are fully private, really private neighborhoods. Someone could request us in a multifamily district, or in a base subdivision, you know, and I think, like all CUPs, you know, one of the things we take into highest consideration, whether it be a conditional use permit or a home business permit, is, you know, the traffic and the impact to neighbors. So, I mean, that consideration will be given.
Essentially, we want it to be like a residential use. That's really what we're looking for here, is conditional use for a 30-day rental that will behave like a normal residential use.
Yeah.
I wanted to bring a couple of points up on the application. It does mention in C there, on the conditional use application, if you will, for the short-term rental, talks about a inspection prior to the issuance of that.
Right.
What do you see? What does that kind of look like? And I'm kind of focusing in on safety of those that might rent it.
Right.
From a, you know, the, obviously, I think they're going to be looking at those smoke alarms and things of that nature, but also structurally, whether it's a deck or the steps of leading to the deck, and so on and so forth.
Right. Yeah, I think this is a, you know, will be a combined effort. That's a great question, one we haven't really touched on much. But, you know, when somebody makes application, we being our department, whether it's myself and our planning capacity, Wiley, of course, is the director of the department, but we have the building inspector and building official. So I think it's our vision that one or both of us and one or both of them would do these inspections, one to make sure the space is fit for occupancy, for the reasons you just mentioned, building code implications. But we want to verify, too, that the space is consistent with what we find in the application. You know, the application that says it's a finished garage, there's one bed, and, you know, some kitchen accommodations, and there's only going to be a few people there, that's okay. If we go there and it's three bedrooms and six beds, and, you know, a lot more than was explained, then, you know, that kind of, hold on. If you apply for one bed, two people, you can only have the one bed, two people.
Right.
So that inspection, once application is made, gives us more from a planning zoning side, the ability to ensure that the application's consistent with the required use, and of course, you know, the building folks, to make sure that it's fit for occupancy.
And I would add that we do an inspection on all conditional uses, applications, or rezonings, or anything of that nature. So this is not a different behavior than we use for everything else.
And another, along the same lines of safety, should, you know, I have a question. Should these potential short-term rentals, should they be required maybe to show evidence of liability insurance to the city to ensure that there would be coverage for the due rent? That would be just a comment that I would make, or something to think about possibly.
Yeah. Andy, I'm not sure if you have any input there, Mr. Mullins. I don't know if that's something we can require, per se. Maybe we could ask, you know, for evidence that they do have the coverage?
I don't know. That's something I'd have to look at a little bit, because I think, obviously, with most of our CUPs, we can add it. Horton, so I, off the top of my head, I think that is something that we could include as part of the requirement, in addition to the application fee, the inspections, all of that stuff. Most landlords would do the same for any tenant that's coming into their property. So if we're concerned about the safety of citizens, visitors to the city.
Right.
You know, we would want to make liability was in place. So I believe that that is something we could request, but I'm happy to double-check that.
Okay. We'll take a look into that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything. Thank you, and staff, and city council for providing us with clear direction. I know that short-term rentals are a complicated task, and I appreciate that guidance. Mr. Horton, you are up next for zoning text amendments. But seeing that the time is 7:10, I didn't know whether you wanted to proceed with that?
I will proceed in accordance with the planning commission's wishes. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, you finally have the complete zoning ordinance all put together. We've gone through the chapter by chapter, so unlike Thomas, I'm not going to read a lot of stuff out there yet, although I think Thomas did a great job with his presentation. Of course, just as a refresher, we are doing this because of Strategy 21 in the 2018-2023 Comprehensive Plan, which states that the city needs to, quote, "Review and update city zoning, subdivision, site plan, and sign ordinances to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices." So just some housekeeping notes, you do have an approval for resolution. I understand we don't have a quorum, but that contains the complete language of the zoning, of the zoning text amendments. Also, I wanted to point out that some of y'all may have received a concord version from me earlier in the week, and that was given to you for, it sort of gives a planning explanation for everything that we've changed as going, which probably will not be a big surprise to the commission. There are several things that I wanted to cover specifically there that are different after the review with the city attorney and the city manager, also known as the zoning administrator. Oh, thank you, Thomas. Okay. If you look at our Village, Community, General Commercial, and R&amp;D districts, you'll see that we basically standardized the regulations to be consistent with each other, which they really need to do, because they're all on Victory Boulevard. They're all affected by the fact that Victory Boulevard is our entrance corridor into the city. And obviously, we have seen what the effects of having a lesser buffer than 75 feet will do. So from Victory Boulevard, regardless of which district you're in, you're going to have a 75-foot setback for uses off of Victory Boulevard. Now, I added some language under General Commercial and Research and Development that reflects the fact that we do have a HRSD easement on that side of the road. I am happy to report to you that the HRSD easement hugs the right-of-way of Victory Boulevard. So basically, what you're talking about is the first 30 feet of those properties being taken up by HRSD, which is why we've essentially put all of our regulations in terms of buffer and parking, parking based in part on where that easement is, because obviously, we can't get into it. So, you know, the buffer 25 feet, again, in Village Commercial on this side of the road, it's basically a straight shot back. But on the other side of the road, there is that HRSD easement, and so would require planning back from that easement. Because, again, we can't plant trees in the HRSD easement. Wouldn't be advisable, plus, we can't do it. Parking, there's no parking allowed in the front yard to be ceded. That's unchanged. That's been there forever. And General Commercial and R&amp;D, there is a distance regulation for the parking. Again, I mentioned the HRSD easement because we can't have parking in the HRSD easement either. So really, what I've tried to do is codify, and I've worked with the city manager on this, and with staff. Thomas has been a part of this as well. But in looking over the language today, I think we've really sort of got it covered, the 75-foot buffer off the front, but the way some of the sections were titled, we could probably do a better job of housekeeping on that and make it clear that the 75-foot setback is there regardless of whether it's a front yard, side yard, or rear yard. So that's what I'm trying to say there, and a few more words than that, or maybe a few less, I don't know. At this point, you know, I'll be willing to take any questions you have. This is now, of course, with us not having a quorum, this is going to be scheduled for the October Planning Commission meeting for public hearing. But you can ask the questions now. If you think of any coming up, you know where I am.
Thank you.
And let me also thank the Planning Commission for all of their work that they put into putting this ordinance together at this point. I understand we haven't gotten past Planning Commission yet, but I just want you all to know how much I do appreciate your input.
So I would like to welcome everyone, and we are going to take a brief recess, or just roll it into?
It's up to you. We can roll right into it.
We can roll right into it then. I'd like to welcome everyone present and watching from home to the regular session of the Pecosin Planning Commission on Monday, September the 16th. Unfortunately, we do not have a quorum to proceed with any considerations of the agenda items as listed. We did have a work session prior to this meeting on the items found in the work session agenda. We will consider those items that were subject of tonight's public hearing at our next meeting on October 21st to include amendments to the zoning ordinance and adoption of Appendix E, short-term rentals, as well as the constrained capital improvements plan, and any other recommendations or items prepared by staff. With that being said, we will close tonight meetings, and we will meet again on October the 21st. Thank you.